Good evening, let's call this meeting to order, roll call please.
Ms. Miller.
Ms. Williams.
Here.
Ms. Chesney.
Here.
Ms. Kearns.
Here.
Ms. Lanning.
Here.
Mr. Moore.
Here.
Mr. Richmond.
Here.
All stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the law of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And I further grant myself the bid in high school for the community of this district and all.
Is there a motion for the approval of the agenda? Thank you, is there a second?
I'll second it.
I have a motion and a second, would you call the vote please?
Ms. Miller.
Yes.
Ms. Williams.
Yes.
Ms. Chesney.
Yes.
Ms. Kearns.
Yes.
Ms. Lanning.
Yes.
Mr. Moore.
Yes.
Mr. Richmond.
Yes.
And the motion passes, all approved? Okay, Dr. McGinnis?
Yes ma'am, thank you, I always like to start with a bit of a recap of depth, how we got here today. So at the beginning of September, the Board of Education provided guidance on facilities and district reorganization with two options, one being a Central Benton option and one being a Central Lafayette option. After research and many discussions, our recommendation at the October board meeting was 7B. We believe that could best serve our students with a two-high school model. If the board chooses option two, that too would help our financial situation and our academic concerns and we will make that work. Last Monday, during the Board of Education work session, the board voted 6-1 to allow public comment. Administration presented on the impact of Plan E and special programming needs. The board engaged in dialogue which resulted in no longer pursuing Plan E, which was to maintain all three high schools, and establish another meeting prior to decide on a two-high school model. Ten community members provided public comment last Monday. Last Wednesday, we had twenty-seven community members provide public comment. The consensus after that meeting was to modify Plan Two, which was a Central Lafayette model with four middle schools. Public comment has been provided on five previous occasions, it will not be part of the agenda tonight. If we do move forward with action for facilities, there will be another public hearing and then there would also be an opportunity for public comment at the board meeting on November 24th. For tonight, administration will present a revised Plan Two, which will include the feeder system, the boundaries, staffing impact, financial impact, and academic impact. So without further ado, Mr. Hamilton, if I can have you pull up that feeder system, thank you. We do have all thirteen plans attached to the agenda tonight, so you can see the work that we've done over this whole process. The plan that you're looking at right now is a recommendation from our board, but I do want to point out to our Board of Education that this plan, we had to move Ellison over to the Truman Central path because Lafayette would be over capacity. And so we do have just a couple of edits that we have made to this. We also may need to look at Spring Garden because their capacity is pretty tight. When you see that PowerPoint slide and it has the capacity on there, that is Spring Garden based on a middle school and so you can have a few more elementary students in that model, but still that may be something that we have to tweak as far as boundaries go to make sure that works for Spring Garden as an elementary. I will say, in all of these models in this whole process, I think we've received some feedback that it may have been too much too soon on some of these models and so we are trying to look at a more phased-in approach. So before we had three-middle school model, this takes us back to a four-middle school model. I know there was some concern with having eight hundred students in a middle school. So we would also, on this model, hold off on expanding early learning and then, again, just maybe some slight adjustments to the boundaries. And with that, Mr. Kelly is going to go over what the boundaries would look like on this model. And if you can scroll down, Ms. Hamilton, is the one that we edited? Page thirteen. There you go, thank you.
Yeah, so I'll let you see, so the adjustments made before we bring up the boundaries, so you can see them up there. With moving Ellison over, that takes Lafayette down to eleven-seventy instead of around that thirteen-fifty mark. And then that moves Ellison's kids over to Truman into the Central pattern. Okay, Kevin, if you want to disconnect then. Okay, so then as this pulls up, you guys have a copy of this map in front of you. This is the model with us moving Ellison into Truman and Central. So you'll see here, you've got, while we're zoomed out, and then I'll kind of zoom in a little bit and show you. Carden, Hosea, Spring Garden, and Scape would feed into Benton for middle school. Edison, Parkway, and then Ellison would feed into Truman. Oak and Coleman would feed to Bodie, Pershing, Lindberg, and Field would feed over to Rubidoo. And then the bold line is your division between Lafayette and Central. Okay, so if you have any questions on that. One thing that we did here with this too is try our best to preserve our current boundaries and then down where Spring Garden takes over for Pickett and Hyde. The first thing I did was just combine Pickett and Hyde and then did some minor adjustments on the north side of Pickett's old boundary into Scape, which then bled in a little bit to Parkway and Coleman's boundaries. So that's where we made the adjustment to fit those students into Spring Garden that would have been between Hyde and Pickett. So every Hyde student would go to Spring Garden and then the majority of Pickett students.
Are there any questions on boundaries at this point? Okay, here and none, we will move on to staffing impact with Mr. Carell.
Yeah, thank you, so really the process with this has not changed. We looked at the numbers for each building, especially elementary and class sizes. For example, Carden Park, they might have eighty kindergarten students and we divided that number by twenty-one because we wanted our class averages for kindergarten one and two to be around twenty-one and then grades three and four, twenty-three, and then grades five and six would be twenty-five. And then we also mirrored those at the secondary level, middle school and high school, for those class sizes to be twenty-five as well. We also looked at administrators and secretaries and nutrition, maintenance across the board, nurses, counselors, and just did an average based on student enrollment within a building. Our total cost, cost savings for Plan Two R is two-point-three-two million is what we project to be the potential difference, again, looking at attrition and not through a rift. The max difference that would be projected within this plan would be about four-point-one-seven million if everything worked out perfectly, people resigned or retired within specific positions. When we talk about staff being affected, total staff affected, excuse me, total staff affected in this plan, certified staff is approximately a hundred-and-sixty-five staff members. Classified staff would be about seventy-nine staff members and then administrators would be nine.
Can you say those again, or where are they?
I did not provide the staffing impact, but I will say that I'm going to give you certified as a hundred-and-sixty-five. Classified is seventy-nine and then administrators would be nine.
And that was, the cost savings was four-point-one?
That would be the max savings, four-point-one-seven.
And that's for one year or that's by the implementation of?
That would be two-to-three-year plan, yes, through attrition. The potential savings next school year would be two-point-three-two million. And that should be on some way that chart that I've used over the last
Yeah, we have that one.
however many plans we've looked at.
Any other questions on staffing? So we don't have those numbers that you just said, the certified, classified admin, we don't have anything with that on it?
I did not provide those, no, but I can.
I would appreciate it.
Yep. And I've got that with all four plans that we've analyzed.
And how does that, so since I don't have it, how does that compare to previous plans? I know we've had a lot of them.
Plan Two, Plan Two was, certified staff was two-sixty-one, classified was one-fifty-three, and administrators was not, excuse me, was thirteen.
Any other questions on staffing? Okay, we will move to Dr. Hetchworth with our financial impact.
For my, for me this evening is our finance projection tool that we have evaluated all the plans with how that will affect our budget surplus to deficit as well as our reserve ratio over a five-year period in relation to what Mr. Carell was describing with staffing. We also have the savings regards to building utilities and the appropriate fiscal year when we believe we realize those savings. You have two plans, one, if everything happens perfectly with attrition, where we see all the savings net, which is twenty-seven, and then you also have the estimated plan which we believe will happen in over two years' time period to see how those savings impact our budget. And be happy to answer any questions on those projection tools.
I just looked up to the board, it appears those two have been labeled backwards.
Yes.
Yeah. Yeah, just, yeah, so.
Can you tell me what you mean, where?
Oh, this top corner here.
Oh, the estimated is actually?
Yes, so the estimated is, I like to think of it as most likely.
Yeah, I got you.
But that one should be, the curl says EST should be listed as max, right?
Right.
Yeah. Yeah.
Thank you.
Sure.
And the improvement, oh, the improvement in the, in the reserve in the following years have to do with the changes that were made either in two thousand twenty-six or two thousand twenty-seven and then they're baked into that, those numbers going forward, is that correct?
Yes, the reason you see that max plan have a high reserve ratio over the five-year period is because those savings haven't entered instead of over, phase over multi-period time. And so if this was just savings related to the plans, of course, we would be looking at all other expenses to reduce in different areas that we have within our districts and so staying true to the other plans, we've just included savings with the plans on these estimates and not additional savings through other means.
And does this have salary increases in it?
This has step only. It's not all of them, okay.
And what, did we also have, I remember another plan or another scenario where there were no steps. Was that the do-nothing plan, maybe? I don't think we ever had no steps, we didn't want to have a freeze, but all of these have been added. I think, but I've seen this budget, Dr. Hetchworth, you've projected something with no steps, haven't you?
Everything that I showed have would assess.
Are there any additional questions?
So both of these plans, and I realize that these don't have increases on them, that's a significant issue. But both of these plans, if we were projecting a sixth year, we could potentially project at least a two, two-and-a-half percent additional increase in reserve, is that correct?
It would, but also please note that we have a goal of reducing our expenses by eight million over the next two years and so this plan, these plans, whether it's the max or estimated, will take us a great distance of getting to that goal. If we give eight million over the next two years, we will by FY twenty-nine be about twenty percent.
Yeah, that's good.
Any other questions for Dr. Hetchworth? So when we've talked about, Dr. Hetchworth, back to what you said, so we're going to, with this plan, we would realize two-point-three-two million next year. Where have we talked about other, if we're, I know, what I believe is that we are very much trying to prevent a reduction in force. So if we're going to achieve, if this plan were to achieve two-point-three-two million next year, we would still have another one-point-six-eight million, if I just did the basic math correctly. Have we discussed where, or have you all discussed where that will come from? Is that, because that would have to be in addition to these assumptions up in the top right table, correct?
Yes, so we would look for other positions that we could consolidate besides the ones that are inherently included in the building consolidation.
And did this one factor in Webster? Plus what? Webster would be a phased-in approach, so I don't think that was included into these projections, is that correct?
Webster is included, it's just included a year later in the utility statements. You can see on the back page you have utility statements in FY twenty-nine because what we're doing is basically saying we're going to phase in Webster and potentially gear to sell Webster and close out.
So when you say, so I don't have a lot of, personally, I don't have a lot of belief that we're going to sell these buildings, that they're going to be a hot commodity for sale. No, no, no. So then my question is, I would assume though that we haven't built any like sales revenue into this. Like I hear you say we're
I do not.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure, I just want to make sure.
Correct, so I don't have any sales price listed. Of course, any building that was sold, those funds would go to capital projects, which is one-four, which is not necessarily an operational account. Your funds one, two, five, and six are an operational account. So I don't have any of those dollars included in these statements because those would just increase our balance in our one-four capital projects fund.
Yeah, Doc, I just wanted to make sure that that wasn't already, I just wanted to make sure that that wasn't a part of this projection because I just wanted to double-check.
You are correct.
Any other questions on finance?
Well, this isn't a big question, let me just say that to begin with. But the other thing that you've done, and you've done a nice job of presenting these plans with a consistent plan so that they can be compared to each other, so thank you for doing that. Do you see that, is the unpredictability of the revenue, I mean, there's some positives that could happen with some revenue and some negatives that could happen with the revenue of both, right? You want to speak to that?
Yes, so in the upper right-hand corner, I have some assumptions for revenue. You can see for non-assessment years, I have two percent increase in A D and a three percent increase on reassessment years. I also have what our current operating levy is, and I also have the current state agency target of seventy-one-hundred, which is just a shy lower than seventy-one-forty-five, just in case the state is not appropriate, full honey. And so those are the assumptions I've used for these projections.
Yeah, I mean, I'm kind of thinking along the lines that Whitney says, where would some of the others be? It's possible we could have some increase in revenue, but of course it's possible not to. It's possible
It is.
Yeah, I know, I
Yes, so if our A D goes up by more than two or three percent in those alternating years, we will see increased revenue which would help us get to our target goal faster. But I wanted to use some somewhat conservative approach with that A D would be, especially with Senate Bill Three and also Senate Bill one-ninety passing in previous years.
So that's going to be, so the legislative question, Dr. Hetchworth, was going to be my next question. So I know that the modernization task force has come out with some preliminary ideas. I admittedly have not been paying attention because we've had this going on. Is there any suggestion in what that is anticipated to look like?
Yeah, so they're going to add some student performance incentives, that's how it sounds like possibly. They are also going to look at changing your local effort and how that's tracked out of the funding formula because the current formulas track that in two thousand four, two thousand five, local effort year. And so they're going to modernize that and make that a more current year. And so that will affect everything. The biggest statement that I think I have on is the one from Governor Keough that says he does not want to increase funding beyond what we currently have. So I think we're going to be pretty flat for the next four, five years when it regards to state funding.
Thank you. We will move on to Mrs. Studer with academic impact.
This might sound like a broken record with academic impact, but I'm going to
How's we doing, how's we doing our APR?
Seventy-four-point-seven, Mr. Richmond. Our academic service team states anchored in one truth. That should guide every decision, every initiative we launch, every conversation we can have about the future of this district. The quality of teaching in a tier-one classroom is the greatest determinant of student outcomes. The human being standing in front of our children every day remains the most powerful influence of their learning. We lead in excellence, that's why we established frameworks, protocols, and structures at the elementary level. Consistent resources the last three years have been put in place, implementation is in full effect. Consistent middle school model, we want a consistent middle school model. Hattie's research even goes further and he tells us that the collaborative power of teachers working together is the force that drives and accelerates student learning. That means excellence doesn't happen in isolation. The belief isn't accidental, it is something that we cultivate. More flexibility to place the right teachers in the right courses, align and make stronger our P L C teams where teachers have the opportunity to collaborate. Today, Victoria Mueller, an instructional coach with the St. Joseph's School District, took all three of our Algebra II teachers to watch each other teach. That is powerful. Right now, they're all in their three independent, oh, they're all in their three, there are three high schools that we've established. There is so much power watching other teachers teach your subject area. We have a goal and it's to build deeper academic career and college pathways. And it's to stabilize programs so that they're sustainable, they're at alignment, and that they have impact year after year. These aren't abstract goals, they are things that directly and profoundly shape the experience of our students who walks into our classroom and the district and then walks out into our classroom, from our classroom into the community. This is the work that matters and I want you to keep that at the center. This is the work that we continue to stay focused on and this is a work that will change outcomes for our kids. Do you guys have any questions?
This is model, this updated plan, it creates consistency six through eight in the middle schools, or what does that look like?
And the two are edited by admin, that is seven, eight.
Okay. They are all seven, eight. Okay, I was wondering, because we had talked about that maybe it would have to be
We did, we thought we would have to make some tweaks to make this work, but we were able to do it with seven, eight.
So Dr. Studer, change introduces, you know, variables, let me just say that, variables, opportunities and risks both. Your team, I'm sure, has looked ahead as best you can to figure out, you know, and will continue to as changes are solidified. But what are the risks that as a community we really need to be, that you're most focused on, that we need to be thinking about with these changes?
Yeah, it's the inclusion of students into that school community who's being accepted from the outside. We worked really hard on that with the closure, the repurposing of Mark Twain. Tabitha Kizer did a fantastic job of leading that work and saying, she started out that school year defining the Edison Eagle and the dispositions that an Edison Eagle carries on with it. Those are the things our building leaders, along with district leaders, would set up as norms and protocols at the beginning of the year to make sure. There's a number of things that we did right with that repurpose. Our, in the spring, we included families over ahead of the game. Those are all things that are going to be so critical, important. I see it every day, and I said this to you guys before, the model of Carden Park, and I, you know, I grew up on fifteenth and Pacific there on that hill. Those students, K-six, when they hit sixth grade, they, some of those students go into Spring Garden. It's so hard for those students to feel like they belong and they're, they're just, it's And they're, they're just, it's, it's, we don't have a consistent feeder system there. And it's like that in a few places, but that's the most, that's the one that breaks my heart the most.
Carden Park is still going to all four middle schools.
It is.
And I think that's something that we don't, we don't talk about very much, but also we don't, not everyone knows. And that is, that's hard for a multitude of reasons for those kids.
Yeah, my heart hurts sometimes when you see a seventh grader from Carden Park enter to Spring Garden. And they do a great job of trying to, it's just, they've had it a whole year, Jose and Hyde to make that transition. And it's, it's, it's something that we have drawn attention to and want to support. If we can get this right, that would be great to get set up that consistent feeder system for our kids.
Any additional academic questions? Okay, at this time, we would take any questions that you may have about this plan, or we would gladly entertain board dialogue. Who would like to go first? Mike?
Certainly. You know, so I really like, I really like what I see here. You know, it, it's, it is a phased approach, right? So it closes less schools, it maintains four middle schools. And while we knew we would, you know, compromise maximizing the savings, it appears that along with all of the other cost reductions that we're looking at to get us where we need to be financially, so I like what I see. Thank you.
Can you, can you talk to, so I know Pershing has been a discussion point for a long time. We've talked about making that an ELC. I know Dr. Hetchworth has talked about, you know, not, not yet. So what do you see as a part of this plan happening around Pershing? Or has there been consideration of that with this plan?
So Pershing would be an elementary still in this plan?
Yes, I can read that. What I mean was, we have talked about Pershing transitioning to an early learning center. And I believe at the last meeting, we talked about the potential of that, if that were to happen, that that would happen later down the line. Is there any consideration of using Pershing for that purpose in the future, or is this just keeping it as it is?
That is something we've talked about in the future, so that could be part of a long-range plan. It would have to be something where we would get financially stable and then implement that. We still have that need at that time.
I'll say something. And, you know, I misspoke last time. But Jake, I want to thank you for the work that you're putting in and listening. So I congratulate you on that, too. I think the idea that in the midst of a lot of change, we make, we control as much change as we can is, and I feel like that, that you've really heard that and have done that. And so I want to commend that you, I want to commend the work that you've done. I said some things last time that I really meant to say thank you, but I think I said them pretty awkwardly. And I, but I can see this time, in spite of my presentation, you, you heard that and you reacted to that, and so I appreciate it.
Hey, anything else? I'm making this for Tom. Anything else about the plan?
Yeah, I knew you, I knew that. I probably will at some point, but my mic went off. No. I don't have anything right at this moment.
Okay, I'll go to this side, ladies. Okay, Ms. Kim?
It looked like Rhonda was-
Yeah, I mean, here you are.
I, I have, kind of, I have a question. So we have looked at, we have looked at Plan E and compared it across. We have the 2R plan here with the four middle schools. And I'm looking at Plan 7B, that we haven't tried yet to tweak with the four middle school model. So my question, I, my question is that I, I still have, I still would like to entertain the idea of looking at 7B and what it could look like with the four middle school model, so that- Oh, hold on, hold on. Because I, it is not because the room is full of red, I want to make that clear. My thinking on-
Excuse me, crowd, if you're not able to be quiet and let us handle the business, we'll have to clear the room. And I really don't want to do that. I just need y'all to calm down.
Okay, I have an obligation as a board member to look at the district as a whole. And we've heard from lots of sides. We've heard from Lockit's side, we've heard from the Benton side, we've heard from lots of different sides. So as I look at 7B, the one thing that I want to give it is a fair shot at the four middle school model, because I said at the last, last board meeting that I feel like it gives us the best long-term option. So I, my question is, would it be possible to look at 7B at a four middle school model and look at what that might look like if we did that? Because when I look at 7B right here in front of me, it still has the Early Learning Center on it, so we haven't really redone this plan without the Early Learning Center, like we have 2R. So I really want to know if it's possible that we can compare these two plans like we've compared the other plans.
Okay, my question is, is there a majority of the board interested in this information?
That's fair.
And my question is, and the only reason is, it's been lots of meetings, lots of weeks, and we're asking for information, we're not using it. And then it's not a majority of the board asking for information. It could be one or like two people. And unless a majority of the board is interested in moving forward, it's a waste of everybody's time.
I agree.
And especially, and my concern is-
Nope. Nope, go ahead.
And actually, I was getting ready to say that I was trying to pull out the maps from before when we looked at 4A, 4B to see if something was kind of similar before I spoke. But I do agree, I think we can look at it, too. I think giving both plans a fair shot.
That way we will look at three plans in total.
So I, so, okay, now I'll pop a pipe in. So my concern is that we're just going to keep doing this. You know what I mean? Like, there's a bunch of Benton people in the room, so now we're going to say we want to go to 7. Next week, there are a bunch of B, a bunch of Green in the room. And I'm not saying that you shouldn't do that. I'm proud of them for standing up for themselves and what they believe. But I'll also remind everyone of what happened with Plan E. So I don't, I, I am concerned that we will just keep doing this. And I, I don't, I don't personally have any reason to believe that if we leave tonight and say, we want to look at this one again, that anyone will be, because again, the room will be full of, full of different colors every single time, and we'll just keep doing this. And to me, that is cruel and inhumane to our students, staff, and community. That is, that is blasphemy. No, I get it, I get it, I get it. That's why I voted for Plan E two times. So, so that is my concern, is that we don't stick with a plan. We do a plan, we go home, we get berated, which is fair, absolutely fair. And then we come back and we change it again. So my issue, my issue with Plan 7, as I've said this entire time-
You want to ask again?
It doesn't bother me. My issue with Plan, my issue with Plan 7, I've shared. I, I don't take as much issue as the traveling back and forth between Hyde and Benton, even though we haven't had good dialogue about how that would happen safely. I do take issue with wasting taxpayer dollars, which we are exceptionally good at, that and planning. But, no, but, but my issue with wasting taxpayer dollars is that we had all these reasons why we could not use Lake Elementary. All these reasons, and we close it, and it sits there, and it accrues the issues that an empty building accrues. Then we said, okay, it's going to be an early learning center. And, and you know, I, I know well enough to know, we put a lot of money into that, being an early learning center. And if it goes back to an elementary and we move that to, I guess that plan was Pickett, that's going to cost, that's going to cost money as well. So the taxpayer dollars going in and out of that building without any vision or planning concerns me. The closure of Field, we just asked taxpayers for money for HVAC. That HVAC is brand new. And so again, to me, if we are going to show that we're, that we're being good, well, I, I, I just have a lot of issues with that plan. I also have issues that if so much of this sense of urgency is driven by, by money, that plan didn't get us where this plan does. And if you add in a fourth high, middle school, it will even more severely not get you where you're trying to go. So I believe that we have a financial issue. Some of that is our own doing, some of that is not. You know, some of that is the fact that we've been talking about this for 20 years. And it is, I think we all understand why nobody has made this decision for 20 years.
That's why we've got to get it right.
And, and here's the thing, and I, and I understand that, but 7B, 7B is not going to get you, and if you add in a fourth high school, we can all do math, it's not going to get you the cost savings, because you're adding, you're adding that school back in.
Middle school.
Right, that's, so I'm sorry. So if we want to look at it again, I don't think we, I think if we can't leave here tonight, then just don't do anything. It's going to be worse.
Well, that's what I was going to say, I was going to say-
But remember, we can do nothing, and it won't be the students sitting here tonight. It will be their younger siblings that will be back here, and it will be worse. It will just always get worse.
Well, the thing about it is, I've noticed in every meeting, you know, we're asking, I need more information about this, I need more information about this, and all honesty, to me, and this is only my opinion and everything like that, it's just if all of us already know, you know that it's almost a deadline, it's almost a deadline, and we're trying to make it to the deadline, and then at the deadline is, I need more time, it's not enough information, I'm not able to make a decision. If we're not able to make a decision, guys, let's just admit it now.
Well, and I want to-
That is not at all what I'm saying.
And that's what I said, this is only my opinion. I like you talking, didn't interrupt you. I'd please shake this thing courtesy. No, that's not necessary, guys, come on now, it's already hard, and it's already difficult, and it's already emotional, and everything like that and stuff. And so I'm asking everybody to not speak out and to let us work, please.
So I, and I want to clarify, I do not think that we should do nothing. I do not think that we should keep sending the administration back. Again, we already know, as we did with Plan 2, we knew with Plan 2, that if you add back in a middle school, the cost savings would go down. The cost savings would not be as great. You're going to, you're going to do the same thing with 7B, or 7C, or 7R, or whatever you want to call it. I am, I am, I appreciate the work that you guys have done with this. You did what we asked you to do, as you have continued to do. And I, I am of the opinion to move forward with this, but that is, I'm only one percent.
That's not very bad. I really would like to give this plan the same shot of the four middle schools, just to see what the numbers are. Because also my concern with 2R is we're going to have two high schools extremely close together. I want, I want 7B to be thought through as much as possible, so that we can look at more of a long-term solution. I, I mean, I graduated from Lockit, I believe Green, but we got to do a plan that gets us into the future. And that would be why I'm asking, can we please look at this plan with the four middle school model and some other tweaks to it, like we did?
And I just think that the time to request that was at the last meeting. Yeah, I mean, I think instead of saying, we're not qualified, or we're slow processors, then the time to ask for that was today, was not even, what was it, five days ago? So, but that's just me, and so we can, I'm, I am where I am, and you are where you are.
Yep, and the last meeting, I talked about 7B. I never agreed at the last meeting to go with 2. The majority did, so we went with it. But I don't feel like I really got a chance to ask that at the last meeting, and that's on me. I will take responsibility for that. But we have to get this right, and I'm not ready to do nothing either. But I want to make sure that I have every piece of information I could possibly have, and I feel like I need to have that information for 7B.
And I agree with you.
I agree.
Let me ask, can I ask you a question?
Sure.
Is that a possibility, to do that?
We could. We have a plan that is similar to that somewhere in these 13 plans.
And I think that's what I was looking for. I thought there was one of like 4A, 4B, or-
Yes, 4A.
Both four plans, A and B. One has, they both have a middle school model. We would just have to look at that again, with an early learning center not part of that.
Yes.
So it's something we can do, if that's the will of the board. That's what I would say.
And I, and I totally agree. But I have to also look at the, the financial pot for the entire district, because my whole life has been dedicated to early learning, and trust me, I value that more than anything. I also understand how we give good learning opportunities early in a child's life, because their brain is making permanent connection that birthed the Bible. So I, I am 100% in agreement with that, but I also have to look at the pot of money we have. It's no different than my own personal budget. I may want a Mercedes, but instead I drive an Explorer, because that's the pot of money I have for the moment. It is not off the table permanently. We just got to get a few other things situated, and I feel like when we're ready, it will, it will come. So please don't hear us saying that's never happening, because I will fight for that for the bitter end. But at this point in time, I think we have to be realistic.
Okay, so are we looking at another meeting this week in order to look at that amended plan?
Well, do we, are there four people that want to do that?
Mike, you were about to say something.
Yeah, you know, I, I don't need to see more detail on that. I'm very confident that it will underperform this plan financially. I don't put a lot of stock in this whole idea that it sets us up for the future, meaning it will lead to two new high schools. I, I don't accept that. And so, you know, many, many times, we're told, deal with what you've got, quit asking for more. And so personally, I don't need to see another plan.
How do you know what you have?
Would you please stop? I've already asked this many times. It's no public comment, and I ask you to stop, please.
So on Monday, November 24th, I'm going to vote for one of these two plans. I'm going to, I'm going to make that, I'm going to make a vote, and it's going to be for one of these two plans. But I feel like, I feel like we've narrowed this down, we've seen what we can do with an improvement here. And again, I commend the improvement. I think that it is a hoop in some regards to ask the administration to jump through. It may not yield the results that we're looking for, but I support taking a look at the Plan 7. So it's going to be 7R.
And I guess I would just add to that. To prevent more, more of the same of what we've seen, I would recommend that we have another meeting Wednesday night, and then finalize a plan. Have a public hearing on Monday. Like, like, I, I do not want to go back into a meeting and bring all of these people back together and have them not, you know, the suspense and the drama, which I, it is already a suspenseful and a dramatic decision. I just do not think, and I thought at one point we had all agreed, that we would not go into the 24th meeting with two different plans. Because we've seen what happens. We choose something and then we change our minds. So to prevent that from happening, I would like to see- So, to prevent that from happening, I would like to see if, if, if this is what the four of you have decided, which that's what it is, the four of you decided that you wanna look at this other plan again, then we need to have another meeting on Wednesday, and then we need to have a public hearing on Monday with a vote, with, on one plan on Monday. That's, that's my opinion.
I agree with that, by the way.
Super.
I agree with that as well, I think it's only right in order to go into a meeting, you know, with the plan. Everyone, number one, knows what you're voting on, and you either approve it or not, okay, but it's not all up in the air, and everyone's wondering over the weekend, is it gonna be this, is it gonna be that, everyone needs, you know, to know. And it's my only issue with the process, is we all have this information.
Well, I wanna remind us also, the way back to the beginning of this, this is the plan that the administration recommended as well, we don't wanna forget that little.
And then, like, also, I want to remind people that our plan agreed upon in the long-range plan, it was a different recommendation, and we all know that too as well, and so, and then I want to remind people, it is not the admin's choice or vote, it is ours. And we need to own that and not hide in behind, and I'm not saying you are. I'm just mentioning, I'm mentioning about the things that I've been accused of, and I wanna be really careful of my words, cuz I may end up on a T-shirt, I don't know, but I'm just saying, I need to be, I want, I want our board, you know, to be able to own our words, and I'm prepared to, I'm prepared to own my words.
Well, I, I, again, if, if, if we still have feelings that we're not gonna make a decision, then just call it off now. Like, if you're not gonna be willing to make a decision, what's aggravating me about this is, is again, we, we go October 27th, that was a charade to get to. We all vote for, for Plan E, we come back, we change our minds, we come here, we change our minds, like this, this is not helping. This new school that everybody wants to get, guess what, this is not helping. This and the fact that we haven't had an audit, that's not helping. So, again, I get, like, I, I don't wanna do this either, I don't wanna do this, but I would like for us to show some freaking leadership, and make bold decisions, and move forward. And what I've noticed, like, but I've said multiple times, that we're not qualified, we're slow processors, I am qualified, I am not a slow processor, and we need to move forward.
I would like to throw out a recommendation, so if we're looking at revised Plan Seven, and we already have a revised Plan Two, we could do that Wednesday night, look at them side by side, if you wanted to have the public hearing at that time. I know, Mike, we talked about not wanting the public hearing on the night of the board meeting, as we did when Plan E was approved.
That'd be my recommendation.
I'm good with that.
And I would agree, that if we do not have a decision on the 24th, that we need to stop, for the safety and mental health of our students, staff, and families, but we are on board to proceed, we've made that recommendation, we stand by that recommendation, it is the board's vote, but if we can't get to a decision on the 24th, I would ask that we stop.
So, can we, um, can we leave on Wednesday, would it be the public hearing, public hearing and then a special meeting? Because you're gonna have to have some decision, which, who knows, you're, you should have some meeting about some decision from the board, about which of those plans you are moving to the 24th.
We can do this by having that public hearing, we did this before, we present the plans, and we have to follow that board policy FC, where we compare this to status quo, we have the three-year enrollment projections, all three of those pieces in the policy, but we can do that side by side with each of these plans, and then, I would say, a public comment after that.
Right, and then public comment, but then into a special meeting, you said.
I would stop and then go to the board meeting on the 24th, but that's just my opinion, that is up to you guys.
That's my concern of leaving that meeting, so you've had the public comment period taken care of, but you, you're going to the, the 24th meeting with two plans again, so I get what you're saying, Mike, like, having a public hearing right before was very, very long, but it's still going to be very, very long, because you're gonna have a public comment period on the 24th, which I am fine with, I don't have a problem with that. I just think for clarity's sake, whatever, if you do a public hearing on Wednesday, and then you have this special meeting, how are we gonna get to one plan by Monday?
Shouldn't we do that on Monday?
But I, and that is what I disagree with, I think that we should take, we should be able to look at those two plans on Wednesday, hear from the public comment period, and then say, this is the one that we are gonna vote on, on Monday at the board meeting. Because then you have another public comment period on that one plan.
Either way, you're gonna have two more public comments.
Oh, I, the public comments, I, I think we should have them all the time, I think it's perfectly. But, I'm not gonna vote with that. My point, though, is, I think getting there on Monday night is what.
Is the focus, is what you're saying, in these.
Yeah, it's a focus on, this is the one plan that we are moving forward with. Either, either this is the plan that we're gonna go forward with, or we're all gonna say, we can't do it, we don't wanna do it, and then we just don't do it.
Exactly, I don't like there being, well, we could choose either, I don't like the surprise, I don't like, it's a mystery of what's the board gonna do now, and everyone's just in an uproar, it's just not, gosh, I believe, it's not right to continue to put everybody through this, when we can easily, and I say easily, okay, we can just make a decision.
Yeah, and that's, and that is my thing, is if we get to Wednesday night, and everybody knows, I can't make a decision, I don't like either of these plans, then you don't have to go to Monday night, you don't have to do it again, you already know, nobody wants, there's not four people that wanna do it. Monday can be a regular board meeting where we approve the financials.
We can pick a plan, uh, Wednesday, public comment Thursday?
No.
No, we have to work.
No, we have to work, it's the jamboree Thursday, like.
There's no reason to do this every single night, and we can just handle it.
I also, I, I don't get.
It's as if we're running away from making a decision.
Well, what I think is, what I think, and I know, I, I struggle to say something here, cuz I don't know the legal logistics that we need to do, so I wanna make sure we stay in bounds, but I don't think it would be inappropriate, and it'll probably be something on the air, on, like, we have the presentation, we have, we have a special meeting. We have, well, we have a special meeting, we have a presentation to that, we have some board discussion, we pause and give a public comment, and then before we leave there Wednesday night, we take, we take a vote of what we're gonna put on the agenda for the 24th.
This is what I'm hoping for.
It's what we've been saying, yes.
I know, I, so I'm just kinda repeating, but I don't know if that, if that gives the, I don't think we need, I don't think we need two more public hearings, I think we kind of know.
You have to get two more public hearings.
Well, I mean, okay, I don't mean that like that, I don't think we need one Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, I think we could accomplish one on Wednesday night, and then we accomplish one at the board meeting, we've got the audit that night, which is gonna be good, and, and maybe we could do it. If that meets the criteria of the, of the policy, I think that would be, I'd be fine way to do it.
You just have to have that public hearing before any proposed action, so as long as you have that, it doesn't matter if it's before the board meeting, a separate day, it would be fine.
So we could have a, we could have a work session, where we're hearing the whole thing, like you did tonight, which we, I said to the nice guy Jake, nice job of summarizing tonight to kick us off. Then we could have public comment, and then we could go into a special, special meeting after.
We would call that a public hearing and then a special board meeting, if that's what the board chose to do.
Well, it seems to me like that, I, I agree, we all are very close, and, and, and seems to me like that would be sufficient. But I feel like, and I, I realize, I'm the most suspect here about, you know, what do I, what do I think? But I, I feel like that we have one week, and we should use that week any way we need to, to make the best decision we can on the 24th. And so, that's why I'm for this, is because I think we ought to do that, and I think, I think we could've come tonight and said we're ready to vote, or people could've, we could've come Wednesday, and I believe we need to be saying we're ready to, and like other things that we're gonna bring before the board meeting, we should be bringing a plan to the board meeting, right?
And it's my wish about the meeting on Wednesday, if we can hold it at a larger spot, and then if we're also able, you know, to ask anybody in the public, I wanna see red, I wanna see blue, I wanna see green, and the reason being is, if we're looking at the colors, we change our minds. And so, if everyone's able to come out, and we're able, you know, to look at everybody, I think our board owes it to everybody, you know, to look at everyone in their faces and make a decision.
So what, what I will ask of the next, uh, so I don't care where we have it, or, or what that looks like. What I would ask, when we were at Central, I think it, it was difficult to have any discussion, like, we were so linear, that it was hard to ask questions without leaning and trying to hear, like.
It's really hard to hear.
So, so if we could do more of a worship, so that we could have a discussion without pandering or whatever.
Well, I'm just knowing, if you're looking at the calendar, I mean, it's everyone's last chance, Wednesday, and so.
Well, not, not really, not really, don't say that, cuz you could call another one on Friday.
I'll be optimistic, I'll be optimistic.
I would say that, I, I won't, I'm so short notice, the problem is gymnasium's on short notice, and you don't have a chance to test and tweak audio, don't work. So, we would have to, if you wanna move it, it would have to be in one of the auditoriums.
Well, here's my other question, so I think one of the things that I struggled with today, and this is not, is not a knock on administration at all, is the, the maps and everything was out so late, which, again, not your fault, we're asking you a thousand different things. They were out so late that it was really difficult to compare and contrast, so if we're gonna do this by Wednesday, when would you project you would have the information out, like, would that be able to be out by tomorrow?
Probably not.
So then do we, so then that's, but we can't do Thursday cuz of a jamboree, what would Friday look like, I don't know, like, or on Saturday?
It's a jamboree.
Well, I, I, trying here, guys.
No, you're making a.
Right, like, my point is.
Aim for, for Wednesday at noon, we can aim for that, this, this just takes a lot of pieces of work. And it's a little bit of a domino, of making sure one person has their task before the next one, so, but we can aim for Wednesday at noon.
And, and that's fine, because, I mean.
It's the best we can ask for, I think.
I agree, and, and I guess I just wanted to make sure that it was even plausible, but, but I understand, if, if you guys aren't even, if you're not able to get it out until the time of the board meeting, that's fine too, I mean, the comparison for me is gonna be pretty easy, the staffing implications, the financial implications, those are the types of things that I'm gonna be looking at, so, that's fine.
Are we needing any other information from the admin in order to make a decision for Wednesday?
Jake, we haven't tried the Central Auditorium, is it, is it, I mean, do you have any idea if any of these facilities are available? No, I'll have to figure that out tomorrow morning. And then, and then we just let people know where we're gonna meet? Yeah, I, I can meet, I, I can meet anywhere, but I do agree, the Central, and, and I don't think maybe anybody's gonna be on Zoom, but that had to be really hard to hear, and it was hard to hear even, even in the meeting, so, I think if we could, I think a different venue, try to.
And if we're able to locate another location and it's here, then all of us are just gonna get nice and close, I mean, it is what it is.
Well, you're gonna have to fire the fire code, both fire codes, which I don't know if we are or not.
Is there any other information needed?
Okay, so Rhonda?
Yes.
Could you repeat your request, please?
Yes, that we would look at 7B with the four middle school model, because I did have a concern with the large middle school on 7B, so we could have that, and then it would also, we'd have to have some discussion, cuz on this one, Pershing is closing to be an ELC, but what might be another, another option, or would Pershing still close, or would, would, would that affect the middle schools some way or another? And so that's kinda what I'm looking at for that.
Is there an option that you would like to see?
I think, I think.
About the middle schools?
I just think it's gonna be really important that people put in their recommendations, I don't know if that's happened to this point, but whatever you want, ask for it, so that we don't have to keep doing this.
Yeah, yeah, and that's what I'm trying to clarify, like, cuz I know that you mentioned, well, if we're able, you know, to look at the middle schools and have a discussion now, is our discussion time, I mean, if there is like a recommendation or like a thought, well, because my fear is, is we're gonna get to the meeting Wednesday, and we're gonna be looking at the model, and it's like, well, I kinda wanna see this over here.
That's what happens, that's what happens.
I know, we cannot.
Yes, it is, it is, and I understand.
Yeah, I understand that, but I think we, I think for all the other things that we do wrong, I think there is some consensus here that says, this isn't exactly maybe what we, exactly what we would've wanted, but it's a pretty doggone good representation of what we did want. And so, I got, I have confidence that they've all attended all the same meetings, we have a chance to give input in, and Rhonda, I think that'll be important, than anybody that has it in their, gives that, and then, you know, they're gonna, they, the administration, and I don't, I don't think that's inappropriate, has continued to say 7B, I think they're gonna, they're gonna put their best foot forward, and we're gonna vote on that plan or this plan.
We'll do it side by side, and if the comparison, see, you can see the difference.
And will that process be the same as it was October 27th?
I'm hoping so, if we can get that pamphlet that kinda length, that lines it all out for both options, I think that would be helpful to have for people who are coming in. I don't know if I can get that done, but I'll try.
No, I understand, and I, and I wouldn't hold you to that, and I just wanna clarify, as with the rest of you, I'm not excited about this. I don't find joy in this, I don't find happiness in this. I'm not rah rah for one plan or one school over the other, this is terrible, and we could have done so many things better. My frustration now is that we are just all over the place, like that, and, and I get that it's a hard decision, but that is where my frustration is coming from. It's not, I'm married to this plan and not this one, I want what's best for these kids, but this is, this is chicanery.
I think we need to, to the degree we can, and I know it'll be an estimate, we ought to try to resurrect what the conversion cost is of the two plans as well.
Any other information that you would need, Jennifer?
No, I think they hit on a little bit, I like the idea of comparing them side by side, keeping the other one in, and I like the idea of you giving the presentation like before.
Sure.
Yep, I'm on board.
Anything else that you would want from our team?
No, I just want for people to keep in mind that, like, even as we're looking at the plans, there are things, you know, that are not gonna change. Like, if you're looking at the locations of the high schools, it's not gonna change, I mean, it is what it is on locations. I mean, if you're looking, if you're looking about the locations of the elementary schools and middle schools, it's not gonna change. And so, like, if there are issues, you know, those, there's only as much as we're able, you know, to do. I just want, as we arrive on Wednesday, I just want everybody, you know, to to be prepared in order to make a decision, and if you're not able to make a decision, you know, if you're not able to make a decision, then you're making a decision. And I just want everybody to be cognizant of that.
So Wednesday's public hearing, 5:30, and then special board meeting right after, with the decision, is that the plan, just so I'm clear?
Okay, I guess I just have a question on time, when you said, we're not changing the locations of the elementary schools, I guess I'm not understanding exactly what you mean by that.
We're not able to move this whole building as well.
Okay.
Are there any additional comments or questions?
I do have a question, that when you said earlier, I thought too, that there was a budget out there if we did nothing, I.
I thought there was too, but then when you said no. I thought there was too, but then when you said no, I'm like, well, maybe I made that up, I don't know, we saw lots of numbers.
I do think he gave us one, and I can go back and look at my emails and.
Are you talking about salaries again, when we talked about?
No, just the budget whole, if we did nothing.
He's got, he's got current budget projections.
Yeah.
Right, he does.
Yeah, we have had that, we all have that, and it slips down to like, like 7%.
There was one that had hiring freeze, I mean, and I don't know.
No, I don't know, I don't know that, but the word.
And I can look at my, if I find out that it, that, I, or I saw one too.
Yeah, there was one in the beginning. Are there any additional questions or comments? If there are none, is there a meeting to adjourn?
I've motioned to, make a motion to adjourn.
A second?
A motion of a second, did you need anything else, Rhonda?
No, I was gonna say a second.
Okay, cool. Motion a second from Mike and Wendy, would you call it a vote, please?
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Ms. Chasney?
Yes.
Herbs? Slaney?
Mr. Moore? Yes. Mr. Richmond?